Hastings Planning Commission, October 23rd, 2017. This is a regular meeting. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from October 9th. Commissioners, any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Motion to approve?
All right.
Second?
And Commissioner Johnson, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes. All right. Second item on the agenda is special use permit, 2017-42, for Spiral Brewery. Staff report by Director Hensman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Planning Commissioners, what we have before us is an item pertaining to Spiral Brewery. We've had a few of these in the last couple of months here. I'll go through the specifics of the application we have before us. It is for a special use permit for a parking exemption to the downtown parking requirement. As you may recall, recently, the Planning Commission reviewed and ultimately, the City Council approved an amendment to the city code which provided an exemption for bars, restaurants, and taverns within the downtown area to expand, to be exempt from parking expansion requirements. The way that the code was set up is that any business that was in operation prior to 2003 has grandfathered in, that continues to be the same. However, the way the ordinance used to read was that any business that had a net increase of parking demand, which restaurants, bars, and taverns would have that demand, they'd be required to provide parking. Now, in the downtown area, it's almost impossible for most areas to provide parking because the buildings themselves are right up to the lot line, and there's a reliance on public parking and street parking to serve business needs. So, that special, that ordinance amendment was approved by City Council earlier this year, and this is a special use permit that comes in under that requirement there. You may also recall that earlier this year as well, we approved another special use permit for the operation of the brewery taproom, and that one still stays in place as well. So, in reviewing this plan right here for Spiral Brewery, we're looking at a couple of different requirements. We have general special use permit review requirements, which talk about certain aspects and impact of the development. Went through some of these within the staff report itself, ingress and egress, and off-street loading and parking. The proposal itself is not providing any new parking. Ingress and egress doesn't change. Refuge, service areas, utilities, screening buffering, signs and lighting, all those are comparable to what would be normally found within the downtown area. Looking at the general compatibility with other downtown properties and surrounding uses, it's a mixed-use area. You've got residential above, commercial below, you've got bars and restaurants in the area, so this is consistent with what we see in there. We don't anticipate the demand being much more impactful than other developments. Now, the one thing that's a little bit unique about this, as we review it as part of the use permit for the taproom facility, is there's a brewery operation that does occur within there, and the special use permit that was previously approved contemplated some of the conditions of operations there. So, really, what we're looking at here is the parking demand itself. If we were to apply the general parking requirements that we would have for this type of facility, it would generate a need of about thirty-five parking spaces. Now, the former use of the building as a retail space generated a need of twenty-three spaces. So, out of the thirty-five that are required, twenty-three are already grandfathered in, and twelve would need to be provided without the special use permit. So, we're really looking at twelve spaces above what the other former use generated within the development. So, what we did previously is we took a look at the downtown parking demand, did a parking study earlier this year. What we found was that there's available parking within the downtown areas during general and peak periods. When you take a look at the high-volume areas of Second Street and the larger downtown parking lots, parking is available there. We do recognize that that may change over time, and it's something that we want to make sure that we keep an eye on to ensure that parking is ample within the downtown area. Based upon the recent parking analysis that was done, and the increase of twelve spaces from this development, we're recommending approval of the special use permit. We feel that the downtown parking can accommodate the proposed increase from this use here. So, that's what I have for the special use permit report. This is a public hearing. If you have any questions for me, I can answer those at this time, or you could open the public hearing. Thank you.
All right. We'll start with the public hearing. I'll open that up. Seeing no takers, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I've got a couple of questions for you, John. You said that the grandfathered in was twenty-three spaces. I'm just trying to figure out where all of those twenty-three kind of figured in, somewhere on Second Street? Or how did they figure that out when they did that grandfathering in of those spots?
Sure. Commissioner, I don't know if there was actually any sort of way that the uses were attributed for the different buildings to the parking spaces that were done. In 2003, we basically granted an exemption to all pre-existing conditions on there. I don't think that was predicated by any sort of analysis that was done prior to that. So, where the twenty-three spaces for this development were, I don't know if that was ever allocated.
Okay. Have you thought about how many of these types of special use permits that you may be able to handle going forward? I mean, you look at now the Meyer-Brig building is going up for sale, and apparently, they're going to turn that in from two to four residential, have office space, some retail. Certainly, that's going to have additional spot, space requirements as well, parking space. So, I'm just kind of curious, you know, how far out can we go with the existing spaces we have before we've kind of reached our capacity? And do we really even know what that capacity is?
Sure. Looking at the uses that would have the most impact within the downtown area, those conversions of commercial spaces from general retail office into a bar or restaurant has the most impact down there. And so, those would require a special use permit. Future uses that would come forward, we would be looking at revised versions of that parking study. So, when this project goes in, we'll continue to revise the parking study so that we can have a good idea of what the impact would be, take a look at what the net increase would be, and if we can handle it or not.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Director Hensman, regarding our related topic here later, with the Hudson Building and the proposed parking ramp, can you tell us how big the parking ramp is? Is that identified?
Sure. Parking ramp on the Hudson property would be about a hundred and nineteen spaces altogether.
And how does the allocation of the spaces of those hundred and nineteen, how will that work between what's designated for public city use versus, you know, to meet the need and capacity of their project?
Sure. At least, a minimum of ninety-nine of those spaces would be dedicated for public use.
Are they going to be segregated in any way?
On that one, ah, that's still under discussion at this point. And with the parking grant that we received for that one, there was a stipulation that at least ninety-nine of them needed to be public.
Any other comments? Entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve special use permit 2017-42 for the Spiral Brewery parking. I'd also like to make sure we keep an eye on that parking situation as well going forward.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the special use permit, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
And then, this recommendation we brought forward to the City Council on November 6th for final action. Thanks.
All right. All right, next up on the agenda then is final plat review, 2017-45 for Confluence Development. Staff report by Director Hensman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What we have before you tonight is an amended plat, final plat approval request for you. This is for the Hudson Development, Great River Landing. And as you know, this is a project that we've been involved in for quite some time, and a project that we're looking forward to closing on the sale of it, and putting together a timeframe for transfer over the next couple of months here. We want to be able to transfer this in December here. In order to do that, we've been working on a number of different items that I'll get into in a moment here, one of those being the final plat that's before you tonight. What we're looking for specifically for action is to review the plat request. Originally, the final plat that was brought before the Planning Commission in November of 2015 was a one-lot subdivision. It essentially had one lot for the site, and then what was deemed Outlot A along the river frontier, which encompassed the trail and public parkland dedication area. What's being proposed today is a slight modification to that. The modification would include the subdivision of the one lot here into four lots, which would be the building itself, which would be this Lot One, a parking area and future development site here as Lot Two, and then the public use open space as Lots Three and Four here. Outlot A, as you see here, is a little bit different than what we saw originally. You can see overlaid with the plat here, some of the public use or private facilities that would be under the public use agreement that are being proposed by the developer. Those areas would be encroaching into what was originally part of Outlot A. What we're looking at doing is to move the boundary of Outlot A to this location, which would be about, the loss of about fifteen thousand square feet altogether from park space. What this property would be included into would be public, would be privately maintained a public open space itself. So, the facilities themselves would be privately owned, privately maintained, but be subject to a public use agreement. And that would be one of the conditions for sale of the property itself. So, what I've included in the packet here is a little bit of history on where we've got to today on some of the actions related to the Hudson project. We've been involved in this project for, since 2010, owning the building, going through a study to determine what the public wanted to see. We've shown at that time that we wanted to, the public wanted to see a reuse of the building, mixed-use development on there, sought a developer who could accommodate that. We had a number of development firms that were interested. Ultimately, picked Confluence Development. We've been in agreement with them since about 2014. That includes Pat Regan locally and Bill Whalen out of Louisville. Bill has some substantial experience in historic renovation projects, and then Pat has his own experience locally with Schoolhouse Square and other developments. So, we've been working with them, as you probably aware, the last three, four years. And we had approvals in 2015 that, some of them went through Planning Commission and ultimately to City Council to approve the site plan partially, and to also approve the purchase and development agreement. We ultimately signed that in January 2016, and then since January 2016 to today, we've been working through items to transfer the property. Probably most important of those has been environmental cleanup of the site. We've been able to secure grant funds in excess of $4.6 million for environmental cleanup as well as site modifications. We've been able, over the last year and a half, to finish the interior and exterior contaminated soil removal, and some of the interior demolition of non-bearing walls and contaminated flooring. And we're down to really one item left, which is a vapor intrusion mitigation system in which we'd have authorization from Hedra to issue the contract, and we're waiting for some final modifications. So, we're getting down there. Also, the developer themselves have looked at a couple of different options and a couple of different changes within the site itself. Well, probably most significant of that is going from a situation where they were looking at primarily, they're looking at about sixty, seventy units of housing on the site, to now looking at a hotel of about sixty units, and maybe ten to twenty units of housing afterwards. So, that's been one change of the development. The other portions of it, the retail, the restaurant, the event space that's been shown consistently, still remains in there. The public use remains in there as well. One of the things that we've been working through is the State Historic Preservation Office. They're looking at historic tax credits for development of the property. That has caused some changes to occur specifically within the site development itself, the public areas. They wanted to have a public park area that was less formal and more industrial, so Great River Landing has redesigned that in order to accommodate some of the demands that have been placed upon it from that agency. So, that's one of the things that is happening, and will be brought forward in the future as well here. So, what we have here is a list of items, and I think I detailed these within your packet, of things that we're looking to do prior to closing, which we're scheduling, hopeful to do before, in December, and items that would be done after closing. Some of the items that we're looking to do between now and December is the final plat that's before you tonight. We have a parking ramp use agreement. One of the things that's changed within the development is, we originally had planned a parking ramp for this corner of the property here, and the developers are now seeking to place that parking ramp across the street on what's the First National Bank Building. They purchased that a couple of years ago. What they'd be looking to do would be to demolish that building and place about a hundred and nineteen stall parking ramp on there. So, it would be about the same footprint, albeit a little bit wider, along Second Street as the existing bank building. So, if you can imagine, the bank building that's there now housing about thirty-six parking spaces, and then a deck on top of that that would house the rest of them. So, that would be the plan that they would have on that. So, we're looking for a use agreement that we'll be reviewing with Hedra and Council on that one, the amended purchase and development agreement, and then some reauthorization of approvals from 2015 that have since expired due to the sunset clause. So, those are items that we're working on. We'll be looking to bring those forward in November to City Council, and then hopefully establish a closing date in December. After the closing date has occurred, there's other items that would need to be done on the project. Most importantly on those would be the site plan for the parking ramp itself, that's something that would come back before Planning Commission for their formal review of it, and then some other revised site plan items on the Hudson site, including the landscape plan, parking plan, and some of the civil engineering documents. And those would be items that would be coming forward in the future on that. So, what we have before us tonight officially is the final plat, and the modifications as outlined here, which would be the change from a one-lot subdivision to four lots, encompassing the building, public areas, and then future development parking, and then Outlot A park dedication. When we went through the final plat in 2015, the Park and Recreation Commission did recommend a combination of physical land dedication here along the trail, as well as the acceptance of the private improvements with a public use agreement to satisfy park dedication. So, even though the parkland area in Outlot A would decrease slightly, the terms of the approval from 2015 would still be in place there. There would still be public areas, improved publics, improved private areas for public use, and still the accommodation of the trail, and that accommodation of the trail would also include future expansion space and clear zone space from that as well. So, I can stand for any questions that you may have relating to the plat before us tonight. Thank you.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Alba.
John, for my purposes, can you help me understand why they went from the single lot to the four lots? Is there an advantage, a disadvantage for either party, or what was the purpose for that?
Sure. I think the primary purpose was they wanted to have one lot here for the building so they could finance that on a smaller scale with a smaller property. And then, these two open space lots here would not be encumbered with the building improvements. The Lot Two over here would be something that they're looking at for potential future development. So, what it does is it subdivides the property into different uses in the future, subdivides areas that are not going to be developed, or not going to be developed commercially from those that would be developed commercially.
What kind of future development would they be putting in Lot Two?
Lot Two, in the original, it would be surface parking, but they have discussed the potential of a future phase in which they could potentially ramp something up where they would have parking below and something on top of it. But that would be something down the road. The original plan would be to provide surface parking there.
Thank you. So, that, Mr. Chair, so that surface parking shown there in the old block two, that's not planned? In the southeast corner?
Sure, sure. Yeah, that area would be, would be planned to continue as surface parking originally, with the possibility that that could be developed more with the commercial space, residential space on top of that. They would have to provide some other mechanism to provide for the loss of parking and the increase of parking demand on that one. But given the geography of the lot there kind of being in a little bit of a hole, it might work out well to do that.
No, that's what I remember. And so, kind of related to that, the rest of the sort of detail we see here are somewhat planned details? True? And what are we looking at in Lot Three there? The new Lot Three, is there retaining walls and various things, or?
Yeah, on Lot Three there, there'd be some outdoor seating areas over here. There may be a little bit of retaining walls. I know the grade does come down a bit as you go from this area towards the river.
Okay. And the Lot Two, the east, the big lot, that's the public space, or the public-private space?
Right.
Are we looking at a road in there with some parking in the cul-de-sac, or is this?
Over here, this would be the existing parking that comes off of Lock and Dam Road, and so that would continue in about its present location. There'd be a turnaround here. Now, this turnaround would be, is planned to be like a decorative kind of plaza area. It could, it'd be closed down here, but it could be open to the public or open to service vehicles. It'd be kind of a larger decorative space, their hard surface space.
So, some of these details are planned?
Right, right. Yeah, it's one of these things where we have various versions of the landscape plan here and for site development, but we're anxious to do what we can to transfer the property. And so, we've worked with the developer to have some of these items related to site development approvals deferred till after the closing of the property.
And is, is one of those, was one of the latest changes here was the addition of hotels, sixty hotel units?
Correct. Yeah, that one's gone back and forth a couple of times. I know when Confluence originally looked at the site, they were anxious to put a hotel in there, then decided against it, decided that they would go forward with residential space with the commercial, and then upon doing some further research on it, found that that would be a use that they want to move forward with.
Yeah, I noticed that, what is it, December 2014, they eliminated the hotel concept. And that was like right after a market study by Maxfield. I'm just curious, and I don't recall that study or the details of it, was that study suggesting that, that housing would be a better fit than hotel? And is that why they kind of backed out of the hotel concept? Or, do you recall?
You know, I don't recall specifically the details of the report. I don't think that it was really looking at residential compared to hotel units, but more what was the market for the hotel and what would be the yield out of it. I remember, recall at that time, one of the things that they were skeptic, skeptical about was being able to have a hotel in that area of sixty rooms, that in order to make a hotel be more viable, that more rooms would be necessary, and there wasn't the space to do that. But I think they've met further with more specialized hotel operators, and had been convinced that a smaller hotel would work there on a scale purpose.
That's, okay, that's interesting. Personally, I think I'd rather see the housing down there. I, just, it's a different feel than a commercial. That's my two cents. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Burris.
Not Burris. Do you know where the entrance to the hotel will be? Will they come in off that turnaround there?
Correct. This would be the hotel drop-off area here.
Oh, right there, okay.
Right.
What about for the tenants then as well? You know, because they're going to have moving trucks and things like that that have to come in too. Just want to make sure that they're off of Second Street, don't causing any, not causing any issues there.
Yeah, I think for, for most other service deliveries, they're looking at this area down here. There's, if you're, the site itself drops off as you get down to the river, this is the basement area, and it's at grade at this point. And so, the thought is to kind of go into the building, the basement area as a service delivery area at that location.
So, is that a new entrance onto Second Street then? That hotel?
Yep, this one would be, this one would be a new entrance to Second Street, and they in turn would be closing off this entrance over here. If you go back to this site, if you recall here, the courtyard area where the main entrance is today, and it's paved, that entrance would be removed. This would be a kind of landscape park area itself be, this would be one of the areas of the sites where it would be a private park for the residents. But that would be different here. So, this entrance here would be removed, and a new entrance would be located here.
And that's where they're moving the crosswalk to as well, to coincide with that?
Right, right, yeah. And we're looking to have the crosswalk a little bit further to the west here along Addy Street, just to line up better with that intersection here than to have something here.
Is there any talk of putting anything special there for that crosswalk, as far as any kind of lights? Not, not traffic lights per se, but, you know, some kind of signal lights that can alert traffic to pedestrians? Because now, you're going to have people crossing that road at potentially all hours of the night, and the way the traffic flows now, you have to go down Second Street to pass there to get up to 61. And so, there's a lot more traffic that goes through there.
Sure. Yeah, with, with any crosswalks or change to the street here, it's, falls under the responsibility of Dakota County as part of County Road 42. So, one of the items that we'll be doing along with the plat is going to the Dakota Plat Commission next week to talk about some of these issues with them, because ultimately, they're going to have the regulatory authority to do anything there.
Have they done anything in the past as far as that kind of signaling or anything?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, for the county, this is a little peculiar situation, because most of the highways they have are really carry traffic, and this is more of a downtown street. So, it's a little bit different.
Reason I ask is, in the morning, when I walk to my office, I have to cross Robert Street right near the train station there, and they put up signals, you do the same thing, where you push the button which sets off the lights so the traffic can stop. Without those, there's many days I've almost got run over. So, I know when you've got people crossing where traffic is, it can be quite hairy at times.
Sure. I would, I would second that. I've seen in quite a few cities, especially along Highway 61, where they at the very least have these yellow stick signs stuck right in the middle of the road and where the crosswalks are, at least to remind you that there's a crosswalk there and you need to stop for pedestrians. I'd love to see more of that happen in the city.
I just think that needs to be looked at.
Okay. John, how, how far does? Okay. John, how, how far does County Road 42 go? I mean, does it go under the bridge and all the way through Cowtown, or?
Sure. It, it pretty much ends at the bridge. Ends at Vermillion.
Well, I got, I got a couple more questions. So this is the final plat. I assume we're actually going to see a few more things concerning the development of this site before it's all said and done. Can you just walk us through what else we're going to see?
Sure, sure. The other items coming before Planning Commission would be the revised site plan for development. We looked at this in 2015. We looked at the parking, and we looked at some of the entrances that came in and the uses. But we deferred any approvals on the landscape plan, civil engineering, photometrics till more plans were developed. And so those will need to come back. So we will come back and take a more in-depth detail of the uses on the site, changes in the uses, landscape plan, parking plan, civil engineering, like we would with most other site plans. And that would come after transfer of the property. And then the other action item would be the parking ramp to be located across the street here at the First National Bank site. Similar thing with that, looking at the plans for development, impact on traffic, and what, what it would look like.
Okay. So as we subdivide this single lot into four lots, the zoning for all four will continue to be DC Core?
Correct.
True? Okay. And within that DC Core zoning ordinance then, are we going to be looking at a series of special use permits for the use that they are talking about here?
I don't, yeah, with that one, I don't think so. I mean, the retail uses, the banquet facility, hotel.
I was thinking the hotel specifically.
Hotel, I think that's permitted within there. I don't believe that's a special use. I'd have to verify that.
Other questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chair, one additional question. This drop-off, John, is that a one-way?
That one, I believe it would be, yes, yes.
Other questions are coming?
Have they re, redone any kind of timeframes that their expectations are for this thing to start, to keep moving?
Sure.
As far as completions?
On this, with the transfer of the property in December, they would be, starting with some of the interior work over the winter. It's about a year from the acquisition until some of the, the residential space, and I think some of the hotel space would be done. And then I think another six months beyond that on the banquet facility restaurant side. So over the winter, we would be seeing revised site plans for these developments. Looking forward to having more construction outside in the spring.
I guess I would move for approval? I guess the, the proposed amended final plat, right?
All right, Commissioner Johnson moves for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hoppe, all right. Any final discussion on the motion to approve? Seen none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Motion passes.
And then this recommendation would move forward to City Council on November 6th. Then some of the other items related to transfer would be moving there on November 20th, we're planning. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is applications needed for Planning Commission openings.
Absolutely. As you look around the Diaz here, you see a few empty chairs here. And if anyone's watching at home and would be interested in serving on the commission, we have applications open at the moment. So I think we're looking to take applications until the end of the month here. It's a commitment of a couple of meetings a month, first or second and third, second and fourth Mondays, 7:00 PM. And we're looking forward to any and all applicants coming forward here. We have, we will have two spaces that we would need to fill on this commission here. So if you have any questions, please give me a call, 480-2378. And for you guys here, if you know of anyone that may be interested or you want to nudge, that could be good to serve, please do so, because we haven't, we haven't had a lot of applicants at this point.
All right. Talking about you out there. It's a blast, so go ahead and apply. Are, is there any other business?
Other business? Just looking at the council meeting we had a week ago, October 16th, we, they did approve the final plat and site plan for Glendale Heights 5th Edition. That's the 89-unit apartment building, so that's underway as far as the approvals go there. Looking at our next meeting here, there's five Mondays in this month, so the next meeting we have scheduled would be on November 13th. I believe we have at least one variance that is up for consideration in that meeting. So I think we'll, we'll be meeting them as well. Thank you.
All right. Haven't had a variance in a good long time. It's awesome. All right. Do I have anything else, commissioners? All right. Motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we are adjourned.